This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the East Hampton City Council Appointment Committee Meeting. The date is February 20th and the time is 6:03 PM. I have in attendance tonight myself and councilors Gomez and Smith, as well as councillor Denham. This meeting is hereby called to order. All right, so recognizing that we have far more people in here than normally do, I just wanted to provide an opportunity for anyone who wishes to speak on the Appointment Committee topics, not on the agenda, now would be your time to address the Appointment Committee if you choose to do so. Okay, all right, seeing none. All right, so our first order of business tonight considers the appointment of Brian Moody to the Licensing Board. So for the public to understand, eligibility to be appointed to the Licensing Board has various criteria set forth by state law. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 138, Section 4, which considers Licensing Board appointments and membership states that a licensing board must consist of three persons who shall not be engaged directly or indirectly in the manufacture or sale of alcoholic beverages, who have also been residents of the city where they are appointed for at least two years immediately preceding their appointment, and one member shall be appointed from each of the two leading political parties, and the third member may also be appointed of one said parties. So Mr. Moody is a registered independent, and when he was put forward as an appointee, the language in that law that says "and the third member may also be appointed." Yep? You want my pen?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Please write your names there for the minutes. Thank you.
Perfect. So the original intent of putting Mr. Moody forward was the section of the language that says "and the third member may also be appointed from one of the said parties," implying that a third person on the Licensing Board could in theory be of any political affiliation other than Democrat or Republican, but that language would need to be legally vetted for state law compliance, and besides that, the Licensing Board needs a Republican and a Democrat to authorize licenses first. With only one Republican currently on the Licensing Board, the next seat must be granted to a registered Democrat, so were Mr. Moody appointed, it would have been a Republican and an independent and would not be in compliance with Mass. General Law. So before I proceed with a motion to withdraw, do any of the councilors have any questions about this specific appointment? Okay, seeing none, then I will accept a motion to withdraw Brian Moody's appointment to the Licensing Board without prejudice.
Salute.
All right, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. Next on our agenda, we have Lindsay Rothschild to be appointed to the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2024. So before we begin, please let the record reflect, there were some concerns about the appearance of conflict of interest between Ms. Rothschild's role as a real estate agent, selling the 413 Pub, which is currently owned by the brother of Mayor LaChapelle. So in 2018, Mayor LaChapelle and her brother purchased the 413 Pub, formerly known as Casey's Big Dog Saloon. Records suggest the property is currently owned by, quote, "Old Jarvis LLC", which is solely owned by Christian LaChapelle. It is not clear whether the mayor would receive any financial reimbursement from her initial investment to purchase. Old Jarvis LLC is a business owned by Per Management Incorporated, which is a registered corporation where Mayor LaChapelle is a shareholder, registered agent, and secretary. So just to go back a little bit, in 2018, there was an ethics evaluation that was done on Mayor LaChapelle's connection to the 413 Pub and stated that LaChapelle must recuse herself where there is an appearance of conflict unless she gets an exemption from the state. An appearance of conflict arises when it would be reasonable to conclude, after knowing all the facts, that her relationship to or acquaintance with an individual or entity could improperly influence her in performing her official duties. So I contacted the mayor's office twice over the last two weeks requesting an ethics review exemption to ensure that there were no real or perceived conflicts of interest or whether she must recuse herself from this appointment. The mayor did ignore those requests, and to my knowledge, the mayor still needs to receive that exemption, but without her cooperation, I cannot ascertain whether she must recuse herself or not. Now, to the business of Ms. Rothschild, she did participate in her own ethics evaluation, and the state determined that her role as a real estate agent would not disqualify her from being appointed. So to be clear, I'm providing this information for the sake of transparency and accountability on behalf of the public and to ensure that I have done what due diligence is afforded to me as the chair of this committee. The question of who should appoint Ms. Rothschild does not affect her ability to be appointed to the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership. I know Ms. Rothschild well, and she possesses all the traits, attributes, and skills to be an effective housing advocate for the city of East Hampton. Councilors have also received two letters of recommendation from Janet Tetrow, who is the chair of the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership, and founding member Jackie Russo Pereira. Both of them are longstanding pillars of the housing community in East Hampton. When they recommend somebody, I listen to them. So I personally am comfortable moving forward with Ms. Rothschild's appointment tonight because the city needs more housing advocates. But before we move into a Q&amp;A session with Ms. Rothschild, I just need to clarify with the other councilors on the committee if they are satisfied with moving forward with the appointment tonight. And specifically, council president Gomez, I would just like to know if there's any objections from you or clarifications that could, you know, provide some insight here.
First, thank you. I don't have any objections because this committee is just an advisory committee, first. An advisory committee doesn't make us then make any decisions for the city to... It won't affect anything. I know Lindsay very well, and I know she contacted the Ethics Commission, and the Ethics Commission was clear. The Ethics Commission said there is no any conflict of interest. So based on those two things, I don't have any issues. How is the mayor appointing Lindsay for this particular committee?
I agree.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you for getting that out of the way. So now, this is a standard process in the Appointment Committee. We now engage in sort of a Q&amp;A question. We'll do this with all of you tonight. So first, Lindsay, I mean, I know basically everybody knows you, but you know, tell us a little bit about yourself and, you know, why you want to be a part of the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership, and then more specifically, you know, how you feel that you can contribute to this emerging housing climate here in East Hampton?
Thank you. Well, as a city councillor, one of the frustrations I have with these city councillors is the breadth of topics you have to be engaged with. And so when I left the council, I was really looking forward to a future opportunity, which is now, to become more involved in depth. And housing is one area that I'm interested in. First, because I'm interested in social justice, and I also know that any community needs safe and fair housing to be a thriving community for all its members. Since 2018, I've been a Realtor, which has given me a licensed real estate agent, which has given me the opportunity to learn about zoning, to learn about market conditions, to understand the housing market. And so right now, I feel that my interests and my knowledge areas align, and I would like to use that knowledge I have to benefit the community. I am also a really creative figure in terms of thinking of like different solutions that might not be the ones that are already conceived of, and I like to collaborate. I've been attending the Fair Housing meetings for the past six months. I very much enjoy sitting with a group of people who are all passionate about creating opportunities for fair housing in the cities, so looking forward to getting more knowledge in this area.
Awesome. Councillor Gomez, councillor Smith, do you have any questions you want to ask? Lindsay?
So Lindsay, I have a question. It's going to be awkward, but in your words, let's address the elephant in the room. As a city councillor, I know that I've been watching your frustration with another councillor, which is your right as a private citizen to come to these meetings and voice your concerns. My concern is how would your role as a private citizen dealing with dissatisfaction of representation differ from your role as someone invested in this group process if someone went against fair housing or upset you in that way? I just want to be clear.
Yeah, playing about power and using your power in a way that's... In a way that's responsible. So my personal issue as a member of the council is about irresponsibility to power and bullying. So I've been an adult ed instructor. You were in kindred.
Yes.
I was at it for 20 years. I had field students that didn't always like the grades that I gave or other, where we had conflicts with each other, and I've always been able to handle that in a diplomatic way. As a Realtor, I'm always negotiating differences of opinion, and I try to stay level-headed about that. When people abuse their power to bully other people and intimidate other people, that's when I get very upset. And that's the issue that I always want to solve.
And I also find, I think it's totally your right to have your opinion and to engage as a witness to city council, and I hope that what I'm asking you, it doesn't sound like I'm trying to say anything against that.
No, I appreciate that question, and part of swinging up as a city councillor is that I'm no longer in that position is to speak up for others who are being currently bullied by that same person.
So here's a question that I have, because I've always wondered this. So for everybody also to know, I used to also be on the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership before becoming a city councillor, and so it's interesting because we need all of these different perspectives around housing in order to make informed decisions. And so in the past, the idea of real estate agents and landlords has come up about, you know, the role that they play in the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership, largely because the committee is meant to be a sort of social justice advocacy group for affordable housing. So how do you balance a career which makes money off of housing and, you know, advocating for the affordable and fair housing for the community as well? Because I've had this issue with, or I shouldn't say an issue, the conversation with landlords before as well, which is a landlord's interest is to collect the most amount of money on their property. How do you get them to that point where they can recognize we have this need? And so I think sometimes that also applies to real estate agents. So I kind of wonder how you can reconcile, I guess, the sort of capitalism of it with the social justice stuff as well?
Well, in addition to earning income from the sale of real estate, I also help, I also am an upholder of fair housing. That's like one of the first and foremost, when you're talking about ethics of a Realtor, and making sure that everyone has access to fair housing, that there's no redlining, that there's no steering, and that's something that's very important to me, and I engage in a lot of professional development around fair housing to make sure that I uphold those standards. I also work with a variety of different, diverse clients. I also speak Spanish, so I'm able to extend my services and as I was an educator for 20 years, it's really important for me to educate my clients and make sure that they aren't being taken advantage of, any of my clients, and that it's a fair transaction. I mean, we do live in a capitalist society, and people rich, not even wealthy, but people use real estate as one of their forms of investment, building wealth for their families. And that's fair, as long as you do it in a fair way. If you're a landlord, you are a fair landlord, and you're providing ethical fair housing for people. So the same with real estate transactions, they can be done well or they can be done in a way that's not well. So I'd like to be a positive force in that.
Perfect. Do we know other councilors? Do we have anybody on the partnership that can speak Spanish right now?
I don't think so.
I don't know.
I just feel like that would be a huge asset, anytime we can have multiple languages spoken, especially when it comes to something as important as housing. Okay. Do you have anything you want to...? No? Okay.
I'd like to add one other thing.
Yep.
One way that I think you'll be a really great asset to this is that our fair... This particularly committee, I have a lot of respect for, and I do think of it as a think bank for fair housing within East Hampton. So I'm really excited to have an idea builder be part of, not to say the team is not, but I think that's a really great trait to have when we're envisioning the future and how we can create more affordable housing.
Okay, I mean, so I feel really good moving forward with this vote. Is there any other outstanding questions either of you want to ask before I accept a motion? I know you've been furiously taking the secretaries.
I'm good, I'm good.
Okay. All right, so then I will accept a motion to recommend the appointment of Lindsay Rothschild to the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2024.
Salute.
All right, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Thank you for that. I know we need to get some of that stuff out of the way. I appreciate your participation in the questions that you gave. You're more than welcome to stick around for the rest of the meeting. You can also head out and get dinner. That goes for all of you too, whenever you're ready, you know? Okay. All right, so then the next order of business that we have are two appointees to the council on aging. So we have Marie Ferraro and Catherine Carey in attendance tonight. Marie's term has an expiration date of December 31st, 2024, and Catherine's has an expiration date of December 31st, 2025. So I do this often at these meetings. This is just meant for public education. Sometimes you will see on our agendas that certain seats have different expiration terms on them. So when we appoint people, I shouldn't say in all circumstances, there's a few committees that are different, but when you are appointed, you get appointed to the seat, and the seat has the expiration on it. That does not mean that your appointment is over when the expiration happens. It just means that the mayor's office will reach out and say, "Are you interested in continuing to serve?" If so, then we just do a reappointment process. It doesn't actually need to involve anything like we're doing tonight. It's just really to indicate, yes, you're still interested, and then at the end of the year, we sort of do these long procedural motions where like 60 to 100 people get reappointed on that month, so. Yeah, so, all right, so I guess, oh, the first thing that I need to do before we proceed with the Q&amp;A. So Chapter 2, Article 3, Section 3, excuse me, Division 3, Section 2-51A states that all appointees must be, quote, "from the voters and residents of the city." I know you both, when you filled out the application, you had your addresses listed, so that's good. Can you attest that you are also registered to vote in East Hampton?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, so first up, we will speak with Marie. So kind of a similar process with Lindsay. You know, tell us a little bit about yourself and, you know, your relationship with East Hampton and, you know, how you see yourself being, you know, an effective member of the Council on Aging?
Of course. Well, I'm delighted to have received the invitation to this appointment from Mayor LaChapelle, and speaking with you, Brad, my email. So my simple answer, but not to be simplistic, is I care very much about this population since I am a senior and a 15-year resident of East Hampton. During that time, I've seen some major transformative changes within the community all to the good, you know, for example, education in the schools and that sort of thing. And I think it's very timely to offer my expertise, if I could, and experience to seniors at this time. The ad hoc building committee was going on. Communication with them is very important. The facts that were derived from the 2018 feasibility study. Spoke to all the seniors in town, pretty decent response, their concerns. And I think the Council on Aging at this time really is playing a more pivotal role than in the past in addressing and providing that psychosocial infrastructure for the 55-plus members of the community. In my own professional experience, it's been in social services and in healthcare, working, you know, in many instances, that aging-in-place philosophy, which is somewhat new to our generation. And I think at the moment, there's about 25% of us residing in East Hampton, only to grow upward toward a third. So I mean, that statistic is amazing as we look for all, even the general population of housing, affordability, food insecurity, the rising cost of living, utilities and that sort of thing. And I think the role of the senior center in the past couple of years has really made great strides in addressing those concerns. I volunteer there as well, and so they've, you know, increased services in terms of transportation, outreach services, publications, ongoing on what they can and cannot do for people who come in of need. They've increased their health programs, and most importantly, even their social programs have expanded. And I think that's something that's overlooked because 25% of our population, if they're isolated, which is not uncommon in a somewhat rural community, I think that's key. So I think my experience and my skill set would really help to advance and support, you know, the services and the mission of the Council on Aging.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I have other questions, but yeah, let's, I want to open it up to you. Go ahead.
All right. I was just going to ask you about... Oh, I think what I was going to say is that one of the things that I really liked about what you were saying in your intro paragraph on your application and then here is working with the 55 and older population. Just because so many times, the bias in our society is to think of working at the same, as part of the senior center or the Council on Aging, anything to do with that must be much older, and 55 is middle age in our society. So being on the advisory board and just thinking about ways that, all across those age groups, we could meet the needs of East Hampton residents, I think is really great. To speak to your point about isolation and the social psychology involved, I belong to a community group in East Hampton, East Hampton Neighbors, and this is a volunteer, members in the community, reach a volunteer who asks for assistance. The most common ask is for someone to come visit. And so we have a lot of social isolation occurring within East Hampton, so I'm really grateful that you have your eye on that, as someone who's applying for this position.
Many years ago, I managed the Eric Erickson and Joan Erickson Center in Cambridge, and one of the things we did was assemble teams of caregivers to elders living in their home, often without family in the area. And we often just paired one person who would visit. And sometimes those visits turned into junkets to the Museum of Fine Arts if the person was a retired art professor somewhere locally. And other times, it was patients diagnosed with Alzheimer's or some form of dementia, and it could evolve to 24/17 care. You know, they were of means, and this was a while ago, so that they could, the family could really support that financially. But it was key in keeping them out of homes, and this was even pre-assisted living. So it was a while ago, but I understand how crucial that is. As well as my own parents, of course, having that sandwiched generation.
Okay. Yeah, and I guess maybe a follow-up question that I have, because, you know, I think that you've already touched on this, that one of the big points is that social isolation, particularly after coming out of the pandemic, there's a lot of, there's a lot of damage that has happened during that time. We also have the potential of a brand-new building or purchasing a used building that's coming down the pipeline. So this is not to say that you need to have that kind of experience. There's room for every type of skill set to do this work, but, you know, do you have any sort of experience that could help negotiate? Like, what are we looking for in types of property? Things like ADA accessibility or, you know, access to transportation, anything like that that you could think of?
Well, interestingly, in the capacity of my business, I was an office manager for an architectural firm in Cambridge in the Harvard Square, many of our clients with universities, and so I'm used to working with feasibility studies and that type of thing, and really reading plans, if you will, from the initial plans all the way to this high structure with the HVACs and all of that. So in the architectural and the interior design world, I do have a familiarity with the construct, construction aspect of it. But we also worked and actually received an award from Harvard from what they called the Malkin Athletic Center and one of their boat clubs. And it was about providing services and structures within the structure that would meet their needs.
Okay.
And it was students at that point, but I'm also a personal trainer in another life, so I have familiarity with the health and that aspect of it and the ins and outs of wellness centers. They don't call them gyms anymore, really. So, you know, and how the activities that one offers there, you know, from nutritional counseling all the way to the pumping iron aspect of it, which is really the least important in a sense, but yeah.
Okay, I mean, perfect. I mean, this obviously seems like a pretty good fit. Do either of you have any extra questions? Okay, so what I was thinking I would do is now go on to Catherine Carey, and then we can do both of them as a single vote. How does that sound?
Sounds good.
Okay, great. Yeah, so Catherine, basically same question to start. Tell me a little bit about yourself, your connection to East Hampton, and why it is that you want to serve on the Council on Aging?
Okay, well, I've lived in East Hampton since 1987. I've been attending the senior center since about 2020 when I retired from the Hampton Jail. I go fairly regularly there. I take classes, I volunteer, I run a visionally impaired peer support group there. So I'm fairly, you know, I fairly well know what's going on there. And a couple of months ago, whenever the application went in, the director said to me, "Catherine, there's an opening. Why don't you apply?" And I said, "Well, okay."
That's how they get you every time.
Yeah, it's kind of like, you know, so this whole process, like, you're going to ask me questions? I didn't really know what to expect when I came in here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's how it all came about, here I am.
Okay, sounds good. No, I mean, honestly, sometimes the lived experience inside the Council on Aging is probably the best time you've experienced to oversee it. I think sometimes people think that to have certain qualifications to serve on a board, like a council on aging, that, you know, you should probably have like a Masters of Business Administration or, you know, that you should have like some advanced training. Business Administration, or, you know, that you should have like some advanced training on how to run an organization. But to have been the person who engages with the programming, you know what I mean? You have the lived experience, and I, and I think most of the time, boards miss out on that experiential observation and contribution. So I think that's really great. You know, so what about this sort of a similar question that I asked to Marie is, so thinking about what the future on the Council on Aging looks like, how, how do you see yourself helping guide the Council on Aging into a new property? And again, doesn't have to be, you know, anything like architectural or just, you know, there's certainly going to be some changes coming.
Right, and, well, as a bit of a veteran person, I know all about access, not all of it, but I'm quite familiar with accessibility and those type of things. And I've actually gone through the building and pointed out some things.
Okay.
You know, so, so I've done that, and, you know, I don't know. I've worked for the state, I've worked for nonprofit, you know, so I think that gives me kind of a general idea of sometimes where people are coming from.
And you will use your voice to advocate for the service?
Oh, definitely.
Perfect.
Because as, as I go there, I hear what people are saying and what they're expecting or what they would like.
Yeah, absolutely, great. Any councilors, do you have any questions?
I have more to comment for both of you, is that both of you heard about the position from the Director of the COA. And that, I think, in and of itself shows that you're present and in the building and already a part of things. So I think that's exciting when you have, when you have that, so.
The needs are certainly more on the immediate side more than they ever have.
Yeah. Councilor, any questions, something like that? Perfect.
I can't vote, but they have my vote.
A vote of confidence. Yeah, so, and, you know, and I guess I should have said this also with Ms. Rothschild's appointment, but I should, maybe I'll just extend it to everybody so I don't repeat myself tonight. There are so many boards and committees and commissions in the city of East Hampton that rely on people like you to help the city run and to advocate for change. I mean, there are only nine of us on the City Council. It's impossible to know everything that's happening all at once. So when we have folks who want to get engaged and advocate for change and be a part of what makes East Hampton, in my opinion, really great, I just, I extend my gratitude to all of you for doing that because we couldn't do it without your help. So I'll just say that broadly right now. It will apply to the rest of you when I get to you as well. Okay, so again, I feel really great about both of these appointees. So I will accept a motion to...
So move. Oh, I'm sorry. I feel like I'm in a game, Shannon.
I will accept a motion to recommend Marie Carraro and Catherine Carey to the Council on Aging, with terms expiring on December 31, 2024 and December 31, 2025.
So move.
All right, and all those in favor? Aye. All right, the motion passes. So again, thank you to the both of you. You're more than welcome. Head out for the, you don't have to stay.
I thank you.
I talk too much, you see.
And then elevator is at the end of the hall on the right-hand side. All right. Yeah, of course, thank you, take care. So the next order of business, we have two Parks and Rec Commission appointees. We have Desiree Gravy.
Yes.
Yep. And Jishva Patel.
Jishva.
Jishva Patel. Both have term expiration dates of December 31, 2026. Thankfully, there's no legal threshold that we have to meet, nothing to clarify, so we can just get straight into the conversations. This one's easy. And I did want to say thank you for being patient. I know we had a lot of work that we had to get through tonight, so thank you for waiting. So I think first, we will hear from Desiree. So similar question, tell me about your, I mean, I know what your connection to East Hampton is, but tell me about your connection to East Hampton.
I don't know if that's good or bad.
And then, you know, what is, what is it about the Parks and Rec Commission that you're looking forward to and ways that you see yourself contributing?
Hi, obviously, my name's Desiree Gravy. I've lived here since 2010. I have two boys that are heavily into sports, which is basically what brought me into the youth sports in East Hampton. I grew up playing sports, I'm still very active in a lot of things, anything I can get my hands on, basically. I'm on the soccer board, the basketball board, and the Little League board. My children gave up baseball, but there's still hope for the little one. We'll see if he goes back. But in being on all those boards and kind of seeing how youth sports are run in town and then what I grew up with, and seeing the headaches and the hurdles that parents are running into and just what the town offers versus what other towns offer, and we have a great park system here, and I just think that we can do a little bit more for our youth. And it's just something that obviously I believe heavily in, since I have two little ones that are big into it. So I just think there's a lot of people doing extra work that doesn't need to be done if we all just kind of work together instead of having all these separate little committees running the youth sports program. So I mean, that's kind of my biggest thing, that I would love to try and get, you know, just more youth programs into the Parks and Rec side of things rather than having individual committees try to run and put stuff together on them, so.
Sure, great. So in the past, I've asked this of Parks and Rec appointees. So we have two very vocal groups within East Hampton. So there is the East Hampton Skate Park, and then the folks who are advocating for a dock park in East Hampton. So that these, I, I can assure you, these two groups will continue to advocate, and if you're appointed, they will reach out to you as well. So thinking about like stakeholder engagement, how are you going to build relationships with them? How will you prioritize advocacy groups with the larger Parks and Rec picture? How do you see yourself engaging in that, because it's definitely going to be there?
Yeah, I've already heard about some of them. I mean, again, I have two boys, so I brought them to the skate parks in Wilbraham and Agom that exist. I have a dog, we go to Northampton all the time. I think the biggest thing with being involved with like the youth sports boards is you're constantly getting people with different opinions on how things should be run and what we should do with certain, you know, how we run a program or how we run teams and how things are done. So I try to approach everything in a how can we make this work attitude more of so instead of like the no, I guess. And it's really just, I guess, hearing all sides and making sure that everybody feels that they are heard, and obviously, it's whatever's best for the actual town and how, you know, sometimes just things that would be amazing and we wish we could have, but it's just not feasible. Maybe it's not feasible now, but it could be feasible later. So it's just really having an actual, like, conversation with people versus shut ignores, I guess, is what we missed.
Okay, perfect. And then, let's see, I'm trying to think. Do you, do you either, do you have anything that's popping up right now? I mean, I know, I'll just say sort of superficially and with cheek, are you pro pickleball? Because that's a serious thing in East Hampton.
I actually do like pickleball, however, I think it's such a...
How much do you like pickleball?
Let me just say, it's definitely, again, it's, we have this beautiful park, but we have also a lot of, I don't know the right word for it, there's just a lot of headaches that are forming because of the way stuff is set up. And it's just also the potential for disaster-type situations if we have, you know, with parking, for instance, down at the soccer complex, because of the pickleball is now down there as well, and it's very big, it gets swamped with people, and God forbid, something happens to a youth member that's on the opposite side of the field, so there's no way to get emergency services out there because it's like a free-for-all. So I do love it. I think that there's definitely areas of the park that we are not using, that we can definitely try and bring more things into as well. We're not necessarily more pickleball, but I think it's good, I think it's good where pickleball is, but like, there's other areas that we can also obviously bring other things in to make it a little bit easier to...
No, I, I think that's, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, bring the bachi ball. Bachi, every time I drive by, it's got like the courts and the shuffleboard.
That's what we should.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, go ahead.
Thanks for being here. I know this is, it's, it's a big thing, right, being a... So I have a two-part question, right? Well, it's kind of, and I'm also thinking while I'm talking, so that's a problem, right? But, one, just historically, the commission has been run by men, right? And so what perspective can you bring to a body that I think has been very much, this is kind of how things are, right? And how do you engage in something that like traditionally, this is how we operate? Okay? That's that part. And then, I don't have, I don't have kids, right? And when I go up to the park, I play a little bit of pickleball, but it's not like, I'm not, I'm not a fanatic, that's not my thing, right? But I play, I can beat President Gómez, no problem, that's fine.
That wasn't necessary.
All right, sorry, that was commentary.
That's too much information.
But there's, there's a lot of, of the areas dedicated to organized sport, right? You talked about your kids playing all these sports. I, I have no, there's no, there's nothing really in the park for me, right? So, so how do you kind of navigate people saying, you know what, I pay taxes and I'm, I'm committed to young people having space? I think that's very important to their development, et cetera, but other than that, there's not really a lot for me, right? So how do you, how would you kind of navigate kind of those conversations as well as, this is the way things have been, da-da-da-da? So how do you, how do you create a community and an environment where more people are like, hey, I, I'm invested in this too, and I'd like kind of, to kind of have my space too?
Yeah, absolutely. So answer your first part. I have two older brothers. I grew up pretty much surrounded by men.
Me too.
Yeah. I do property inspections for commercial and residential, and it's basically run by men. I mean, I talk to contractors constantly, you know, constantly being looked at in that sense of like, oh, you don't know what you're talking about, and then you kind of just let them speak, and then you're like, oh, nevermind, my bad. So I'm used to that. I don't, I guess, back down from the fight, I guess, which isn't really a fight, it's a conversation, but I'm not very much, you can't really intimidate me in that sense of things. I think that some things work, and that's great, but there's always different ways of thinking of things, and maybe there's something that we haven't thought about yet that could make a process run smoother, even though it's been run the same way for the last 20 years. So especially I mean, today's world is constantly changing, so there's always probably some better process that we have out there that we don't know about yet. As for the second part of it, again, I grew up being an athlete. I still love to participate in sports. I coach way too many teams, if you ask my husband. And I love participating with the kids in those sports, with the softball league, I don't know if it's still around, I loved play, I never played softball growing up. I loved doing the adult softball because it was just an opportunity to get out of work and meet people in the community. And, you know, that was kind of my first introduction to not a talking away, was playing softball on daily field and meeting people from the community in that sense. I think, again, there's a lot of areas of the park and in town that maybe we're not using to its greatest potential. I agree that, you know, the majority of the stuff down there is being taken over by soccer and baseball, but there is a whole other side, like I mentioned, the bachi, that nobody really uses or isn't advertised. And I think a lot of what I see in town and my headaches of all kind of the programs and the sports and the recreation is just there's no communication by it, and it's either just run by Facebook, which 90% of people are on Facebook, but that's not where we should be getting our information as to when they're gonna have Google. It should be something that is advertised more and, you know, get more community participation in that sense. I loved seeing the wiffleball that came out. But to that, like, yay, we have something for the adults and like, we can participate in this, it was also a, why aren't we focusing on the fact that the Basketball Association is crumbling because we have one gym and it's growing, which is great, but now we're gonna tell this 10-year-old, you can't play because we only have one gym and nobody's helping us? So it was kind of the, you know, that balance of like, I'm excited because we have something for me to do as an adult that's still active and wants to be out in the community, but then I'm looking at my kid and like, you might not be able to play this year because we don't have any buildings to use. And it was like falling on deaf ears of trying to get somebody to respond in some way. So I think, again, it's, it's gonna be a growing program. I think we have the parks part down. I think we need to work on the recreation part for everybody and not just the youth side of it, even though obviously that's what I'm living right now, so I'm seeing the biggest headache. But again, I would, you know, the adult softball we did, I would love to do, you know, the, I guess there's a basketball league, which again, I was never aware of. It was just kind of being in the suburban side of it, somebody mentioned, oh, the adult league starts up, and I'm like, well, what are you talking about? Like, nobody knows these things are out there for people to join, so it's, it's a big part. Yeah, thank you.
There's a lot of options.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
First, thank you for how many volunteers you've been doing. By the way, she coaches my dancing. So based on what you said, it sounds like that we have so many programs, but we are, it's not under one umbrella. So we have so many programs. Do you be in favor of having the city, especially the park and rec, run all those programs with the help of those groups? Or you think that the system that we have today is working really good? Because in other cities in town, some cities, they, the park and rec, they...
You want to put yourself out there? I don't know how much I can, I think that, I'm trying to say it in a polite manner. I think the way that youth sports is running right now is, it's, it's bad, in my opinion. I mean, it's run by volunteers. I mean, I, I have a life, I have kids, I have a job, I have a career, I have a relationship that I have, you know, I have a lot going on, so it's all run by volunteers. For the most part, there's usually the same people I'm seeing in every single group. None of them talk to each other. So for instance, I'm on baseball, basketball, and soccer. Two of the meetings fall on the same exact time and the same exact plate, or like day. So had we actually communicated in any sense, I could actually attend the other one to help out, but I can't because I'm committed to another sport or have coaching or something. So I've been talking to a lot of towns that do have that umbrella aspect, where there's a main point for youth contact, or for youth sports or recreation, however you want to break it up. And then they still have the different groups for each individual sport, so you still have a football president, a baseball president, a basketball president, soccer. But it's all kind of works together. It's the same program, it's the same app for people's phones. I mean, again, my kids play two sports and I have two separate apps because they can't use the same website, which in turn, each of those programs are now paying money to gain access to the website instead of just paying it once for all of them. I mean, I've, I've looked at towns that have it set up where they're using the website we use for soccer, and they have their entire Parks and Rec is on there, and it shows youth programs, it shows the adult programs that they have available in the city, it has stuff with the age, Council of Aging for like retirement committees that they have going on, or different, you know, art fests that they do, and classes that you can attend, and everything is just on this one web stop website that you can go to instead of, let me sign into the soccer one, let me see what football's doing, let me see what basketball is doing, and hockey too, I forgot about that. My kid doesn't do that, but I still go to all the games.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. And probably it's gonna be for both, when it's your chance. How do you see the park in 10, 15 years? Because right now, the population of the youth is, is getting less and less, right? Families are having less kids. So if families are having less kids, so how do you see the park in 10, 15, 20 years? Keep pushing for baseball and softball and soccer, or you would be open to see all this stuff at the park because, again, the community changed.
Yeah, I mean, I think that goes back to kind of, you know, if it's been run the same way for 20 years, I mean, things have changed in 20 years, things have changed in the last year, never mind 20 years. So, you know, there's always things that we can look to. I think a lot of the youth sports or the youth side of things and programs also tie in in a way to adult stuff, or I'm just a big kid, I guess. With like pickleball, I mean, we have a lot of adults that are... With like pickleball, I mean, we have a lot of adults that are out there playing, but I'm constantly seeing the kids, they leave our practice and they run, Sasha runs over and like is playing pickleball, like, you know, there's.
But the way Sasha's good.
As much as we say, it's like, you know, the kids are leaving, it's, they're just becoming older in the community, but they're still active, they're still playing hockey, they're still playing basketball on the courts that are out there. I mean, we have beautiful tennis courts that seem to have gone to the wayside and, you know, people obviously go, well, I don't know what I'm supposed to, but we might go to Williston. But I see a lot more of East Hampton residents over in Southampton at their courts because they're clean and they're open and they're available instead of coming down here and something might be going on. So I think there's a lot of missed opportunities in the park for us that with a good group of people that are willing to have conversations, I think we'd be able to, I mean, just make it better, I mean, or at least improve in some way, but.
Yeah, I guess I would like to just see more things they can get in older population.
Yeah, I think, yeah, there's, there's a lot of things. Like I said, a lot of the sports I think can tie into it. I mean, there's also just simple communication of walking groups. I mean, it's just being able to give a time and a place for somebody to go. I mean, that's what softball, again, I didn't play softball, I stood in right field with a glove. That was my contribution to the team because they needed females on it because it was coed. But it was more of just, I knew every Tuesday, Thursday, I could go out and have a conversation with an adult because I work from home and unless you're this tall, that's all I was talking to. So it was nice getting out of the house and having a purpose, I guess, to do something other than.
Since there's two potential appointees, I'll just put a pitch out there. We have a brand new swimming pool that's being built, so any sort of like aqua aerobics for people with disabilities or senior citizens would be huge this summer. So I feel pretty great, obviously, but, so let's, if there, do you have any more questions or do you want to move on? Okay, perfect. So I, we're really just gonna ask a lot of the same questions. I think you've got a little bit of a head start, but, yeah, so just, you know, tell us a little bit about yourself, same thing, your connection to East Hampton and why you want to be on the Parks and Rec Commission.
Yeah, so again, my name is Dhrishva Patel. This is actually the second time that I've lived in East Hampton. I lived here between 2016 and 2018 and moved back to the area after some time out of state in 2021. And the reason being because East Hampton is a community that I felt really like connected to. And after graduating from UMass Amherst, like this was really the first place that I felt like I could see myself calling home and building community here in a long-term manner, whether that includes children and a family or was just building strong connections with like my neighbors and the people that I live around. And I think one of the main things that I really find to be close to my heart is like community building and building like opportunities for us to be able to like rely on one another again. I think that that is something, especially in the last couple decades and like, especially with the pandemic and the isolation that we were talking about earlier with the previous appointees, is there are so many reasons, even though we're like so hyper-connected through social media, like we all, there's a lot of talk and conversation of like feeling really far away and disconnected from the actual people that you're around in the day-to-day. And I feel like the more that we can be using the public spaces that are available to us to bring people together and be able to build deeper relationships with one another, I think we're better off, we will all be as a community and more resilient that we can be. Thinking back to Tamara, what you were talking about with East Hampton neighbors, like being able to have opportunities for neighbors across different experiences or different age groups or class backgrounds or ethnic and racial backgrounds to be able to connect with one another and like get to know each other and spend time together, whether that's through sports activities or like other forms of like walking groups or different like celebrations or barbecues happening in park spaces. Like I think that all of those things could be really fertile ground for like strengthening the community that we already have. And my, my work is like, my professional work is doing facilitation and community organizing is really like the format that I've used facilitation within. So I'm pretty familiar with like what it takes and like the intention around like creating opportunities for people to like connect to each other with, through like different kinds of activities and the kinds of questions that you're asking people and being able to gather information from the people that are like experiencing this community to be able to understand, yeah, what, what are people wanting and needing or like what could help bring people together in better ways? I'm excited to be able to potentially do that through this format and through this commission. And, yeah.
So, you know, something I just want to point out too, that you had touched upon, and I, and I think a lot of us in city government are guilty of doing this from time to time, is that we think of parks and recreation as recreation. And, and I, I think you're right, there, there is this special thing about East Hampton where we have lots of quirky and fun cultural celebrations. And that, and I think that is equally at the foundation of the Parks and Rec Commission as is, you know, sports and physical activity and being outside. So I would love to see more of that. I think that is when East Hampton shines the most, is when we're doing something totally absurd outside and just being ourselves and living in the moment. It's a lot of fun. So there's something that was, you know, sort of peripherally talked about in, in the last conversation. And, you know, we talk about this a lot when it comes to developing land for property, but there's like this real confine that, I mean, East Hampton is like 13 square miles and we're developing structures and the amount of land that we have to, at our disposal is starting to run out. So I guess I wonder, how do you, how do you reconcile either utilizing the land that we currently have or maybe even setting land aside for Parks and Rec type things? I mean, do you have any, like any areas of town that you think are underutilized or, you know, untapped potential, anything like that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that of the spaces that we already have, I could see, I mean, we talked previously about like the use of non-kept park and like how to make that even like a more rich experience for the community. I think the spaces that exist both behind the mill buildings and in front of the mill buildings, like there's that whole park in that community neighborhood area, I'm thinking about the ways that those could be even more utilized. I, I don't know as much about like what the, what is within the city's purview in terms of like land that is not being utilized right now, but I, I would be interested in like doing more of an assessment around like what currently exists and what has been earmarked or like has not been earmarked yet for certain things. I'm thinking a lot about like the stretch of Route 10, like around, between like the post office and like CBS and like how many different community members live in that area and like thinking about like what is the, I know that there's a lot of different stretches of land in that area. I'm not personally sure of like what is privately owned and what is publicly owned, but I would be curious to see if there's any public land that could be utilized to create more spaces in that area. I think there's a lot that's like on this side of town that has been like developed and like invested in in varying degrees, but I would really love to see like more in that area. And I know, like I live over by Parsons and Omar's just, just precinct and there's different conversations of like how to utilize like more area and more land in that area too. And so, yeah, just, I think there's, there's a lot that I'd be curious to like explore.
Yeah. So do you live on the corner of Parsons and Ferry Street? Like.
I do not, I live on Lincoln.
Oh, on LinkedIn? Oh, okay, nevermind. Cause I, I live right near there too. I was wondering if we were neighbors.
Just a hop in.
Yeah, true. So I, did you wanna, I know you were, you originally were the, reached out to her, correct, about the appointment? Is there anything that you wanted to say or any questions you wanted to ask?
Yeah, I think the same question, right? And I think you've touched on it a, a little bit, right? I think that you're gonna be working in an organization that has a particular culture, I think, that's, that's been run a particular way. So how do you bring in a different perspective, right? And then I think the other question is, you know, again, like you mentioned that you don't have kids. I don't have kids, right? Like, and when I go up into the park or, or whatnot, I see, you know, it's very much, there's a lot of organized sport, right? And I think to President Gomez's point, numbers are getting smaller and yet there's still large lots of land, large pieces of land within that that are still dedicated to, right? But, you know, demographics are shifting, needs are shifting, and so, you know, how do you, you know, in that particular environment, like how do you bring in the perspective of not everybody's needs are being met with the, how it's kind of divided up for, you know?
Yeah, I agree with that. Yeah, I think that.
Thank you, Lindsay.
A large part of my work as a facilitator is really about like how to bring people from drastically different and like societally like manufactured, like in opposition to each other sort of backgrounds together and like be able to communicate across those differences and like find common ground or like find like where do we have shared values and like build from a place of shared values rather than like, this is what I want and this is what you want. And we either like have to sacrifice parts of what we want in order to like come to a compromise. I think I try to look at it and like try to orient as much as possible toward like, how could I be getting my needs met in a way that might look different, but isn't actually like losing parts of what I want, but like is actually like gaining something else in the, in the process? And so I think in terms of the conversations within the commission, I would want to try and orient that way as best as possible. I think similarly to what you were talking about, like sometimes people need to like say what they need to say and like feel deeply recognized or like acknowledged in that before they're able to like hear another perspective. And like I have a lot of practice in doing that and feel really fine doing that. And, yeah, and I think in terms of like the second question around like changing government graphics or like how to think about like utilizing space, I think I'm really in, in favor of what you were talking about of like trying to find ways to like bring all of these different like groups and sports, like volunteer groups like together under like a single umbrella or like figure out ways to like streamline that. And I think through that process, there's, I would hope the potential to like assess like, okay, what spaces within this park are needing to be utilized so that everybody is recreationally getting what they need to be able to like run those experiences well for young people? And then like what other spaces are still left over or like how can we be, yeah, how can we be like utilizing what, what is here? I know there's some parts of the park that people feel like a lot of like reverence for or like familial or community connections to. And so like how do we like work with folks to both like honor what has been before while also like ushering in like a new opportunity? I think it's like really something that I'd be curious to like explore.
Something that you had, before, Glenn, did you have anything else?
No, no, please, go ahead, yeah.
Something I really appreciated about your application was saying that especially, I believe in making spaces for people to gather and tending to existing spaces for many future generations, especially for bringing people who haven't felt safe or welcome to make use of these spaces too. And the reason I want to bring that up is that I have a few kids who are athletic and they were in all of the organized sports. And I have a few kids who are definitely not athletic and have some neurodiversity with my children. And between race and sexuality issues along with neurodiversity, they can feel targeted at different times. And so I think that voice in particular and just educating the public about what a good kid looks like and having a group of kids socializing in the park, it's not a bad thing, you know? I always find that so amazing that my kids at school are teaching, are, are being taught in their gym class on how to have relaxation techniques in the town park. And then they go to the town park and I just want them to feel as safe there as they do in school. And so I appreciate that, especially when there have been protesters at school and stuff that are intentionally making kids feel unsafe as soon as they walk off school property. So I had to say that. And then for both of you, I just wanted to ask your opinion and what's your opinion about the park? And I'm not saying that we can change this and I'm probably just gonna get in trouble, but, but the fact that our park charges someone admission to go into the park, what are your feelings on that from an accessibility standpoint?
So I don't think it's a bad thing in the sense that obviously we need some sort of an ACOM. I think, so for, I guess for speaking with like sports instances, when we tell other towns, if you're coming to Nantucket, you have to pay this fee in order to get in, which I think it is what it is, that's what we're charging. I think there could be something that we can put into play. For instance, for, again, soccer, if you want to play and you can't, we're never going to say your child can't pay or can't play if you can't pay. Like we, there's always, we don't even need to know your situation, you just need to say, hey, my child wants to play, you know, can you please help me out financially and we'll dismiss charges and you can play. There's never, nobody's ever being turned away and I think that's something we could look into for the, I mean, for the park as well. I mean, there's a range of obviously different situations for everybody. For instance, like my parents come up out from out of town and I constantly tell them, just come in my car, I bought the season's pass and we can go. And we try and push that to parents too, of if your child plays two sports, buy the season's pass because it pays for itself and just going to the games. And he, my dad's constant response is he doesn't care, it's just gonna, you know, you're gonna do something better with it if I just pay to get in. So it's, you know, there's, there's ways I think that we could offer for people that want to experience it but can't pay for. And I think that's something that we look into, obviously with, you know, the funds that come in and that goes with obviously, you know, all the youth sports. If you get it under one umbrella, there's a lot of money within each of those sports to run the programs that might be cutting costs if we have them all under one, that could be used for the financial aid kind of aspect. But we also leave a lot of money on the table of closing the parks. That's the first of it.
Yeah, I definitely, I agree with that very about that. I think that there, I'm curious what like a sliding scale situation could like look like too, or like offering like this is like half cost what it takes to like operate the park. You can pay more than that to like come in or less if you're not able to afford it. I think my understanding is that the Parks Department, not necessarily the commission, but the Parks Department budget like comes from a couple of different pools of resources. And so I'd be curious about like how, how to either like further like maximize those pools of resources or like diversify them a little bit more to see if there's other ways to like bring in funds. I feel like the conversations that I've had with a couple of other residents is like, like there have been questions of like what kinds of grant funding could be used to like make this, like make these spaces more accessible in terms of like if the, if the concern is that like this revenue is needed to be able to have the Parks Department function, like are there ways to like offset that with other sorts of like revenue? I would be curious about that too.
Yeah. You know, I like that you asked that question because there are. You know, I like that you asked that question because there are examples in our community where we have, um, had external stakeholders sort of capitalize on affordability of certain things. So like as an example, um, our co-op, um, the, the parking garage there is all solar panels. And for the excess energy that they use, they sell it back and get a tax credit for it or some sort of an energy credit and it helps to pay people's electricity bills. So I think with a little bit of creativity and some novel thinking, there's, there has to be people in East Hampton, whether that's businesses or family members, that believe in that accessibility that could easily make it happen. It just means, you know, putting people's minds together. So I think that's a really great question. Thank you for asking.
Can I speak to what you were sharing about like your young children, like, um, experiences of like trying to be in public spaces and like being neurodivergent?
I mean, they are teens.
Okay, teens, sorry, yeah, um, yes, but, um, I'm also, I'm also neurodivergent. Um, and I have a lot of loved ones in my life who are too. And it is definitely something that I want to create more spaces within like the community for us to be able to like learn from one another and like, I think there's often this like social like assumption that like people that think differently or navigate the world differently like are inherently lacking rather than like there's house, superpowers and like different perspectives and different skill sets that like we also bring. Um, and like is there space for us to be able to like share across those like differences and be able to like have opportunities within the public spaces that we do have to like have events where like people can like learn from one another or like do skill shares or like play games or, um, I have a friend who, um, the, the name of the nonprofit is slipping my mind right now, but is based in North Hampton. And they do, um, she worked there for a number of years doing like access, they created like accessible ways for people with disabilities to like do outdoor like adventures and like outings and things like that. And so like I'd be curious to see if there are like ways that we can learn from organizations similar to that to create spaces here in the city, um, to be able to like offer opportunities or even like a partnership with, with organizations like that to bring that back.
I, I know the, I know the family members would greatly appreciate that. So that's a good, um, good insight.
I would also love having like, um, quiet hours in the park, just one hour.
Yeah, people can't see, I'm all like, yeah, let's go.
I have two questions. The first one is I'm gonna stay with the fees. And I agree, I have to see how those revenues will affect, um, the park programs and how they run the programs and the park. But one of the issues that I see when the season starts, and this is a question for both, is they only accept cash.
They what?
They only accept cash.
Oh.
You cannot pay with credit or debit card or anything. So, um, first you, you both are in favor of doing a transition to do something digital? And the second one is, our park closed, this is November?
Yeah, our park closes before the last game of the youth sports season that we use the field.
You both see-
And it doesn't open before the season starts.
So you both see the park opening in winter? And what are you gonna see in, in those months?
My wish would be that it just remains open. We need to maintain the, it, it could be run similar to like the DAR. I mean, if there's a giant snowstorm and we can't plow it, then the gates stay closed and the park's not open that day. I mean, it is what it is. I mean, we go to the mountain constantly and sometimes I wanna go for a hike. I'm like, oh, they didn't maintain it, it's closed, you just don't go on the mountain that day. I think it's abnormally warm this last week and it would have been beautiful to be able to drive into the park, but there's no parking anywhere to get into it. And sometimes you don't have the extra time to walk all the way down to where the fields are. So, um, I think, I, my wonderful wish would be that it would just remain open unless there is a circumstance that requires it to stay closed. I mean, which would also offset some of kind of those costs that you were saying. I mean, right now it's $20 for, well, if you buy opening day for the league. Um, it was, it's a cheaper cost and that gets me, I'm there every single weekend, with my kids at least, every single weekend we're at games. So it pays for itself in the first month. Um, and it's only charged on weekends and that's something we could look into obviously as a, as a city of maybe, you know, we have an age gap or have an age limit where, you know, we can work on what we can do or financially. I mean, there's a lot that could be done, um, even just with the spaces alone. If we're having more programs come in, I mean, we have, like she mentioned, a giant field for soccer that is swarmed on three quarters of the year. But there's also times that we could have, um, outside programs come in and run clinics and run, you know, programs for youth or adults that would pay to be there and that would offset maybe the charge of residents being able to use the park or-
Yeah.
You know, there's a lot of options. I mean, the line that forms because of the cash is its own conversation to be had.
Because including those season pass?
Well, it's even, yeah, I buy the season pass and if I go, depending on when I go, I might still be in line for 30 minutes because four people in front of me didn't get a season's pass and they have to find cash and look around and so even just having two lanes for a season pass type field and that drives you to maybe spend the money to for a season pass, which will get you to the park more because if you have the season's pass, maybe you go the extra time and, you know, it's just, there's so much potential that I think, like you mentioned, it's been the same thing for so long that sometimes having a fresh perspective of just asking, well, the why? Why do you, you've been doing this, well, explain to me why. And then sometimes after you're trying to explain like your rationalities for me. If I'm trying to explain my rationale Omar, of like why I'm doing something, sometimes like, oh wait, this isn't, I shouldn't be doing it this way because I'm not even making sense when I'm explaining it to you. So I think that conversation is gonna be sparking a lot of new interests and thoughts.
Yeah, no, I completely agree with that. I think there's also, um, going back to the like accessibility or like affordability piece too. Like I'm, I'm thinking about like what it could look like for people who can't afford it and that we, we know that because there's public access to that information to some degree or like there's affordable housing, like communities, like being able to like offer season passes to folks who just can't afford that, you know? And so like there's, there's a, there's a way of like pre-streamlining before people even get to the gate, you know? Of that kind of, um, access. But then I think there's lots of different, um, ways to pay online, maybe just through the city government or website. And so I'm thinking about like what could it look like for us to be able to like collaborate with other departments within the, the city to figure out how to make that possible for people that are trying to use non-partments.
Yeah, I mean, like you said, we, we live in a digital world, so I don't see-
We do.
-how it would be that hard to get the little, it's like this big, right? You could just take your phone, thing, you know, in the car.
There are like so many young people with like cars right now who are like, I don't carry a wallet. I just have my Apple Pay or like my, you know?
Times changing.
I mean, look, I, I rarely get super excited about appointments. I'm always hap- no, I, no, listen, I'm always happy when people-
That was your outside voice there, you said that.
I'm, I'm always happy when people get an age, but it's rare when I hear the dialogues that I'm like, this feels like lightning in a bottle in a good way. Like I, I can't think of, I, I'm, I'm just so happy that you all have agreed to sign up to do this. I can't speak for the full city council. I feel like they would be foolish to say no. I, this feels like a really good match for the both of you. So, and I mean, we could talk about this forever, but I know that we're, you know, we're getting towards 7:30 and I, you know, want people to be able to eat and enjoy their evening. So, I mean, I feel really great about, um, moving forward. We're good? Okay.
Yes.
So, um, I will accept a motion to recommend the appointments of Desiree Graby and Jeeshvam Patel to the Parks and Rec Commission with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you so much.
Excuse me, I think I might have missed my opportunity to publicly speak, the way that went.
I'm sorry, yeah, that was, it happened at the very beginning of the meeting. Yes.
You said something so fast about the agenda and I knew that this was gonna be on the agenda, so wasn't sure if I supposed to speak before or ahead.
No, that's okay, go ahead. You can say what you need to say.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Let me introduce myself. My name is Joan Kurtz. I'm the president of the Friends of East Hampton Door Park. And when Councilor Ivey brought up the door park, it's very important for 350 members of the city. Um, a short history, in 2019, people got together wanting to establish a door park. And since then, we have looked at how many locations. Very often it's not in my accurate place or it's too small or it's near wetlands. And we worked with the Park and Rec for almost two years to find a location and we have been unsuccessful. At this point, Park and Rec that was very interested in plot of land off the Manheim Trail off of Ferry Street. The problem with that plot of land is that the soil is contaminated. There is no ADA access to it. There's no parking and there is, it's hard to even think of establishing a par, a door park there. It'll cost a lot of money to take away all the contaminated soil. It's going to take time. And all we are asking for the door park is that you keep an open mind. When this discussion comes up with the commission about access to a door park, to find a spot someplace that's centrally located and just be there for us. Again, Councilor Jen also has a door, we'd like to work our doors, we want to have an enclosed park. If you want to ever get in touch, email is easthampendormpark@gmail.com. We will be attending most of the Park and Rec meetings, I know they'll be talking about it. And on behalf of the skate park folks, please keep an open eye for them too. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I mean, the, so we have one final, uh, order of business before us. Um, I mean, you all, it's, it's just a conversation about somebody that couldn't make it. It's not that exciting, so you're more than welcome to head out for the evening. So thank you again for coming in.
Thank you.
And, uh, so the, the final votes for the city council happens tomorrow night. I, I should have told everybody this, but I'll reach out to you by email to let you know what the outcome of the vote was. And the next process after that is the city clerk notifies the mayor of the vote and then the mayor's office reaches out to do the official swearing in paperwork and things like that, so.
That's cool.
Yeah. All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
See ya. Thank you.
Hi, Bonnie, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, take care.
Thank you, send it in.
Thank you.
See ya.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it. All right, so then the final order of business before us is the appointment of Bruce Homstead to the Commission on Disability with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2024. He's obviously not here. So, here, here is something that in theory we need to understand more broadly. I don't think that we need to know this for this particular applicant. But in a previous meeting, right, I discussed that people who are appointed to the Commission on Disability, we need to have a majority of members to self-identify as having a disability. I think we're at that threshold, so I don't think that this matters one way or the other if Mr. Homstead does have a disability. So, I guess I just wonder what you think in absence of him coming tonight? How do you feel about, you know, do we move the appointment to the full city council without recommendation? Do you feel, I mean, because this is, this is where the, the challenge is. And I know Omar, you know this because I, I've talked about it so many times before, that when it comes to, uh, Council on Aging, uh, Veteran Affairs and the Commission on Disability, I don't hold their presence at the meetings as a mark against their appointment because I recognize that whether it's accessibility to technology or, you know, missing emails or phone calls or not being able to come in can very well be because of the nature of why they are beneficial to one of these committees. But then I also recognize the counterbalance of this is that we do want to know who the people are on the Commission on Disability because it's such an important role in the community. So I guess I just wanna open this up to the, the two of you to, to let me know what you think we should do. I'm, I could go either way on this, but I, I just wanna have like a natural dialogue to ensure that we all feel good about how we move forward.
I have no reason to not appoint him based on what I've read in his application. It's obviously very brief. Um, he had a phone call from Stan Diamond and he's a healthcare provider interested in people, in working with people with disabilities and we have, on behalf of people with disabilities. So in terms, he doesn't have any other experience with the city board or committee. So I just, I don't have, you know what I mean? It'd be a blank slate and so I have no reason to say, oh, this, this might be problematic. But I also have no, um, yeah, so I, I guess, are you saying we would like to create a policy? Or are you saying on this one?
Just how, how we would like to, to vote for tonight on whether we do it without recommendation or, or with recommendation. It's, and I'm, I'm okay with either way. I will say that I've, over the last few years, I've had multiple conversations and interactions with Mr. Diamond. He's a longstanding active member of the Commission on Disability and if he is recommending somebody to apply, I think that carries weight.
Okay.
So.
And in top of that, I just wanna add to the, I feel more comfortable voting in this committee and not bringing his fault with our recommendation to the full council and potentially expose if he has any disability to the full council in front of everybody.
Right.
I prefer to do it, he can vote so that we can avoid that, that part.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I, um, when I, when I reached out to him, I said, nobody will-
Because I understand there's some of the requirements and it's really tough because we should have been asking and I know this is required.
Right.
But at the same time, because we're supposed to ask, I prefer not to at the full council. There, it's televised, it's more public and everything. I, I still wanna protect that privacy from them.
Okay.
That, that's, that's on me, I don't know.
Yeah. So you're saying yes with recommendation? So we don't have to disclose this weird-
Correct.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, I tried to phrase it in a way that was inclusive to say, nobody on the city council will ever compel you to say whether you have one or not. And that even if you say you do, we will never ask you what your disability is, but that it's a, it's a, um, it's a metric that's important for us to convey to the state if they ever were to question whether or not we have a majority with disabilities. So it's, it's, it's a very sensitive subject and I agree. I don't want, I don't want people to feel like they have to talk about that kind of stuff in such a public setting. And, I mean, I've, I've known him at least a year and a half through Facebook. I know he's very heavily engaged around health issues. I, I don't, I also don't see a reason to say no. So, okay. So then, I will accept a motion, uh, to recommend Bruce Homstead to the Commission on Disability with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Also, if we could make a note, um, Councilor Gomez, um, when the, uh, paperwork was processed, Mr. Homstead's last name was spelled H-O-M-E-S-T-E-A-D. The first E is not there, it is H-O-M-S-T-A-E-A-D. So that way we, um, I'll, I'll also let the city clerk know as well so that the paperwork is correct. But, um, okay, so the motion passes. But, um, okay, so the motion passes, um, and then I will accept a motion to, uh, close the meeting.
So moved.
Second. All right, all those in favor? Aye. Uh, meeting is adjourned at 7:32 PM.